Good morning, everybody. What a wonderful crowd of happy faces in the air conditioning. We have one that's a little stubborn here, but that's why she's normally not here. So today, we're gonna do something different. For the very first time, and I'll talk about this in a minute, we're going to record this live. So there's a camera sitting right over here. It's going to record the voice in this little video. And I'll show you kinda how that's gonna look when we post it up on YouTube. I'm purposely not showing you guys, so... I could do that. I could aim at the other direction. I don't really... Nobody really wants to watch me up here, so they would much rather see you when you look happy and then when you look "oooh", so you know, that would be much better. But because I'm recording this, we have to go faster. And I know that's not in my vocabulary, so I'm gonna try really hard here. And you guys keep me honest by like throwing stuff at me. Okay, if I'm dragging on too long like right now... Okay, here we go. So the agenda for today, I'm gonna talk about us being live. We've got a new award to talk about. I've got some reminders, some projects underway with some pictures. Projects still to come. That list seems to never get shorter. I have an update on laundry services, recycling reminders, and activity updates. I also have a couple of extra announcements that I'll do here in the middle. So let me jump to those right now before we go into the first thing. Security. How many have noticed that there's a little change in our security upfront? That's not fair, you're one of them. That was Gary Hess raising his hand. Well, we've actually outsourced the front gate services. So that's now on a 24-by-7-by-365 contract. And the negotiations that we did with the new contractor was to employ our existing guards. And that's why you see the same smiling faces. They have a slightly different uniform. But you know, they brought all of the current staff over to the new company. And we always had a contractor overnight, so that hasn't changed much at all. There's some enhancements that are gonna come with that. We're putting new cameras up out at the guard area in the entrance. We'll actually be able to go back and look at license plates and drivers, things like that. So in case something happens, right now, we're challenged. We can't see those things, but we will be able to. And they're doing what's called a guard tracker system. And this was part of the agreement. And what that is, is a handheld barcode reader. And there will be barcodes put all over the resort in strategic places. And the overnight guards, the evening and overnight guards, have to patrol and they have to scan each of those barcodes. And when they do, it records where they were, what time they were. And it's validation that they've actually done this. And we know if something happened at a certain time, we can go in and look and see where the guard was at that time. So that's a help. The third thing that they're doing for us is they're putting in an alert system. So on both the in and the out paths, it's gonna be like the old time gas station. When you drive over the little hose and it goes ding-ding. And the idea behind that is, we want our guards awake, alert, and greeting you when you come in. And so this is an alert system. If for some reason, they're not paying attention, they're gonna get ding to say there's somebody either coming in or going out. And it's their responsibility to greet them, see them, watch them, take care of them. So we think it'll be a pretty good system. It's certainly gonna help us. It's a little more expensive than what we were doing in the past, but I think it'll provide us a better service and you know, help us manage that front gate. Next thing I wanted to talk about is the letter that you guys have received. This did not come from us. This came from corporate. Corporate's doing a nationwide data update program. And all they did is, I didn't even get to review the letter. They just said, "We've sent this out, make sure your residents are aware." Well, the idea was, we're launching a new portal. It's going to allow you to actually go in and look at your bills, look at your charges, make sure your information's correct. And unfortunately, this was the way that corporate decided to launch it, was to send you this link and say, "Go in, make sure all your information is correct." Well, there's a lot of problems with that. First off, many people are not that computer literate. That's not a negative, it's just a reality. Number two, there's been some issues with the site. Apparently, the site's not working the way it should. So people have had an issue trying to get in. I just wanna promote to you that this is not a critical path element. So if you don't do it, nobody's gonna penalize you. Nobody's gonna be knocking on your door or anything like that. It's a corporate initiative that I don't think was very well handled. And I think we could've done better if they'd have just socialized it with us. So don't fear it. If you wanna try it, that's fine. I think it will be a cool tool once it's fully rolled out. But don't worry if it's beyond you or you're just not interested in playing with the internet games. That's fine, don't worry about it. We'll take care of all the rest. So with that, we're live. I'm recording this event right over there. Say hi to all of the... Everybody say hi to the audience on YouTube. There you go, alright. I'm sure they'll appreciate that when they're up in the frozen north. Is it cold up there? It's not cold up there, is it? Okay. I'm shooting from over on the side here, so you know, I'm not showing your faces. So you can be sticking your tongue out at me or sticking your nose at me. Whatever it takes. I'm gonna merge this video and the slides into a video that I'll post on YouTube. So it'll be a little bit enhanced. The biggest difference is gonna be, while you'll still see the exact same slides on the YouTube, you'll hear exactly what happened in here. So that audio will be going over the slides. And then I'll progress the slides through it. The video will be in a little window up on the top. Now assuming I can pull this off, 'cause I honestly have not tried this in the past, we're gonna do all future live meetings this way. So that the people that are remote kind of get to see the same experience. And we'll experiment with different camera angles and things like that. I think it'll make for a deeper connection because they will actually see what happened, hear what happened. It won't be a recreation of the meeting, which is what the previous ones have been. I took the slides home and just did a voiceover on them. So it'll be more of a real thing. But this implies I must shorten the meetings. Little voices. Alright, so... Now what it's gonna look like is kind of like this. This is just a mock-up that I did. So you'll see the PowerPoint just like you did. Up in the corner, there'll be a little blah 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 guy. And from the audience, you'll be able to hear things like yay and nay and you know, all of those bad things. So you know, I think it'll be a little bit better experience than what it was in the past. We'll see. So watch for that. We did it again. TripAdvisor, the most widely used review source for the travel industry, has awarded us a certificate of excellence. We now have, I think, 72 reviews out there. And we're carrying a full five-star rating. Now that doesn't mean that there aren't some that are less than that, there are. There are a few that, you know, if you go out and look at them, there's one that just blasted us. Said that people weren't friendly, that we had fruit all over the ground and made no effort to pick it up. And that there was way too much traffic. And they were obviously not the right people for this type of property. They were probably expecting a campground and they came in and they moved into a city. So you know, you always have to look at these things with kind of a realization of what the people were that did it. But overall, the vast majority are four-plus stars. So and it gives us an average of five overall. So this certificate of excellence is a pretty sought-after thing. You can't apply for it, you can't do, you know, anything to get it. All you can do is keep getting reviews and they awarded to you. So we're really, really proud of that. That's a big thing for us in the travel industry. Reminders. Danger, danger. Don't go in the pool. I know you're probably interested to see what's going on in there, but oh my goodness, there's equipment and hoses and there's stuff all over the place. Please don't go in and you know, just to look. It's a very dangerous situation. And I can't even imagine if somebody were to fall in the pool, if you were to trip, if you fell on a hose or something. We try to keep it locked when they're not there, when the workers aren't there. But obviously, it has to be open when the workers are there. So you know, please, please stay out. Baths at the large laundry are now complete. I'll show you more about that in a couple of minutes here. But I think they came out real nice and you know, I encourage you all to go take a look. Mailroom window. You know, we have one person that runs the mailroom. And so she needs time off just like anybody else. And so we kinda came to this agreement. She's gonna take off a half-day to use up some of her vacation. So obviously, we still have to deliver the mail. She'll be there in the mornings. The mailroom window will be open from nine to noon. And this only goes for two weeks. It's not a forever thing. But for two weeks, she gets to go home early and spend some time with family and her kids and you know, things like that. So we appreciate your patience with this. Like I said, the mail will still be delivered. Nothing backs up. Just the hours for the window will change. Please notice, remember the emergency notification test. If you're signed up for our emergency notification service, you're gonna get a test today at noon. It's every third Thursday of the month at 12 o'clock. You don't have to call us, it's just a test. And people are getting much better. But you know, each month, we sign up more people and then we get more phone calls the following month when they go out. And predominantly, it's because people either don't listen to the message or don't read the message depending upon how they subscribe to get it. And they just see, you know, a call came in from Victoria Palms, "What did you want?" And so they call the office. It's not a big deal. You know, if you're concerned or you think that you got something that you shouldn't have, let us know. But you do not have to call. On the positive side, with this system, it's been so successful that we're now rolling it out to two other resorts here in the valley. Two of the other very large ones because you know, it was a thing that there is no other option for. So it's been very well received at corporate. And we kinda got a little bit of kudo for you know, finding this and making it happen. I already talked about that. Water infrastructure project phase one is now complete. But... But we do have to replace the fire hydrants and risers on those three valves that we replaced. In theory, that implies no water outages, but I'm not gonna say that. We know better. Things happen. You know, at the very least, they may be replacing the fire hydrant and cut the water line that's beside it or something. So you know, we're gonna do our best not to have any water outages. But what we're gaining through this, and we're going to systematically continue this over the next probably two years, doing a few of these at a time. Now this was $35,000 worth of work to put these valves in, replace the fire hydrants and risers. But what we're doing is we're cleaning up our system. If you can picture that underground is all PVC pipe, it's plastic, which is good. It doesn't accumulate deposits from the water, so we don't get calcium buildup or anything like that. But as soon as you connect to a valve or a fire hydrant, it's metal. And they do collect deposits and they get clogged up. And we had valves that we couldn't shut off. Thus, there were times we had to shut off the whole park to execute a repair. So we're fixing that by replacing the valves. And we're increasing the flow capability because now these valves are brand-new and they're full six inches wide. You know, they flow a lot better and same for the fire hydrants. So as we're doing it, we're replacing the attached fire hydrants as well so that we'll have better flow on our fire hydrants too. It's all in a proactive approach to make sure that we don't end up with a problem. So we appreciate that you guys have been very, very good. Very few people have broken my windows or you know, thrown stones at me. You know, it's been really, really good and I know it's inconvenient. Especially when the water goes off at 9:00 a.m. and you're just about to step in the shower. It's the worst thing I guess would be to already be in the shower and be all soaked up. So if that ever happened, you can come up to the office, you know, just wrap a towel around them and we'll put you off. We'll take care of you. Projects underway. Shuffleboard refinish is done. Anybody that wants to play, by the way, it's highly encouraged. We have all the equipment out there. And the next step that has to be done for shuffleboard is it has to be kind of worked in. It's very rough when it's first done. And it takes you know, some time of play to smooth it out. So the contractor highly recommended that you know, if people wanna go out there and play, please let them. It'll make it better each time. The LEDs in the pool are done, but the new pool surface is going to reflect them even better. I think you're gonna see something really spectacular when the pool's back in service again. Street repairs are underway. With this heat, we just, we can't do it. You know, the hot mix that we use is so hot. And when it's 100 degrees outside, we'd literally be killing people. So we will now, we've done the cuts. So all we have to do is come in with the heavy equipment, dig them out, and put the new hot mix in. And we'll probably do that October-ish timeframe. We pushed that now to the end just because it's just too hot right now. New double sites we created. Those of you that aren't RVers probably don't realize what we've done, but we had what are called value sites, our smallest, oldest sites. And we weren't renting them. You know, nobody really wanted them. They're only slightly cheaper than our standard sites, which are much nicer. And so we needed a way to kind of drive some business into those. So what we did is we attached two sites together, side by side. And we installed a little patio in between them and we put a picnic table on. And we rent them for the price of one value lot, but you actually get two. So one lot is 40 feet. And for today's RVs, for the most part, your RV's gonna take up that whole space. But with these double lots, you can put your RV on one side and you have the other side for your car park and for patio space. So it actually works out pretty nice. We built 10 of them year before last. And again, this was one of those initiatives. We were just trying to find a way to make this work. And when the executive team came out, they authorized me to build more. Because they said it was a great idea, it was costing us nothing and it was actually getting those rented. So we've now built some additional ones ready for this season. Signs. If you haven't watched the YouTube videos, I bought a what's called a vinyl cutter. So I'm now making our signs. And I apologize for the ones that I'm not making so well. There are some that are crooked or have wrinkles in them. But we're getting better all the time. And the idea is, I'm going through the park and we're replacing them one by one. And we're making them more professional looking. You know, we're getting rid of no more laminated pieces of paper, no more you know, sticky things. We've got new signs going in. You know, every week, we're doing more and more of them. So you'll continue to see that. Phase one water project, new park benches. Has anybody seen our new park benches? They're really nice. I think we've got six more of them that will be distributed throughout the park. The idea is to get rid of all of the old rickety benches. Now, I'm hoping that next year, I have funding to be able to replace all the ones at the shuffleboard court. You know, that's my next project, is to get rid of those. But these are much nicer than the old ones. They're made out of recycled plastic boards, you know, fake wood, and cast iron frames, so they're incredibly durable. They don't need maintenance, they don't splinter, they're not going to you know, do damage to you. The other ones are just bad and we're moving them out as quick as we can. Right now, they're at the bocce ball court. They're at the batonk court. They're at the... I'm not sure. I'm not sure where the rest of them are. What I basically told maintenance was, you know, go out and find our worst benches and replace them with these. The ones that I notice the most often are over at the bocce ball courts. So that's a great place to see them. New bicycle racks, those are in. So there's now one over here at shuffleboard pool kind of area. And there's one out at the batonk courts. These were both areas where we saw a lot of bicycle traffic and there was no rack. So we've addressed that. Front wall extension still underway. This is another project that we're using as a filler. It's not a critical project, but please do understand when you look at it, there's not a single piece of it that's complete yet. Because what happens is, we actually extend the concrete pillars. We have to put rebar through them and you know, solidify them. We slide cedar boards into these extensions. And then there's top caps that go on and there has to be vertical braces that go on. There are some that have the horizontal boards in, but none of them have the braces yet. So we'll get to that as we finish it up. And once it's done, then the whole thing gets painted. So that's, it's a huge, huge project. Labor hours. It's not a lot of money, but a lot of labor. So we'll get back on that as well. And I mentioned the large bathrooms are done. Projects to come. You've seen our pool, right? They're rocking and rolling on that. It was kind of interesting. For those of you that don't know, this was not a cosmetic thing. We're redoing the pool because the plaster was chipping off. It hasn't been done in, I think, 13 years. It was actually overdue and the damage was growing rapidly. So we were real lucky to be able to get the funding to do this. And I did hear a rumor that this was gonna be assessed to you guys, and that's not true. This doesn't affect your rent or anything else. This is a project just like any other that we're doing. In the finished product, the pools will be done with white plaster. They don't recommend doing the colors anymore because the sun creates heat actually in the plaster and accelerates the peeling on it. So they do have some colored coatings, but they were very, very expensive and I didn't think we need them. What you'll find that's really cool about it is a plaster pool is smooth. It feels like baby powder inside. No more torn-up toes. If you're out there, you know, playing volleyball, you won't need bandages afterward. It'll be much, much better. It's a very soft, smooth finish and just as durable. Comes with the same guarantee as if we put a color coating on it. New tile will go around the perimeter of the pool. So all of that will be fixed. New depth markers will be included when they do that. They're putting three swim lanes in. Not with ropes, but with lines on the bottom. So if you're a swimmer, you know, that'll help you. If you're not, it doesn't affect you at all. But we wanted to do that. That's a request that we've had for quite a while. The spas are both gonna be redone and we took a different approach with them. Spas are gonna be 100% tiled. So nothing to like tear the seat of your bathing suit. They'll be smoother, less slippery, and they last virtually forever. And they're a lot prettier. So you'll see that coming too. They haven't even started on the spas yet, but both of those will be done as well. And if you've noticed at all, if you've watched it on TV or... Right now, they're in the bottom of the pool replacing like the return gates and other things under the ground. So they've literally gone through the bottom of the pool into the dirt to make sure that everything underneath is up to spec as well. So spas to be tiled, pool walk refinish. So this walkway out here, you know, the past two years, we painted it, not really working. And so we've got a brand-new coating. You may have seen on TV, they advertise a coating for decks that you roll on and it covers up everything. And well, it's not that coating because that doesn't work for the concrete that we have, but it's like that. It's a thick epoxy-based coating that's actually non-skid. It's kind of a multi-color. So it'll be multi-colors of brown with speckles and stuff in it. And it's actually a very nice finish intended for pool decks and things like that. So we're excited about getting started with that. And I think once and for all, we'll get all our cracks covered and we'll have a nice, non-skid finish out there to walk on. Pool bathrooms, that's underway. I'm gonna show you the large bathrooms here in a second. But they'll be done the exact same way and I think you'll be pretty impressed. It finally takes our bathrooms to a level that's commensurate with the resort. We're still planning to move the RV driver's stand. We've actually done a lot of the preliminary work. But again, it's one of those things that I'm not putting at the top of our list. You know, everything has a priority. And you know, that's not at the top of the list, but it is on the plan and we've done a lot of work around it. Restriping the streets. Last year, we actually bought a striker so we can keep up with that ourselves. Last year, we put some crosswalks and things like that in. This year, our plan is to go back after that and redo all of that. So you know, but again, not at the top of my list. Phase two fitness center expansion. And I haven't talked too much about this, but we're gonna open up the fitness center and make it even larger than it is. I've submitted a capital request for next year to replace all of the fitness equipment. So well, it's not approved yet, but... And the approach that we wanna take, and in fact, I would love your feedback. The approach that we wanna take is we want more treadmills, more ellipticals, more bicycles, but we wanna keep the air-powered Red machines. Those are actually medically certified machines because they're infinitely adjustable and they're incredible for rehabilitation or somebody that can't do the heavy exercise. And so the expansion will allow us to put in more of the basic machines and still keep those. Do you guys think that's a good idea? Good, 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 good. So probably about the end of this month, maybe the first week in August, you'll see us in the fitness center starting to knock out walls. We're actually taking space from the hotel and restaurant. We're taking some offices over there. And so the fitness center will actually be a big U shape, but it'll be much bigger than it is today. We've hired a professional consultant to come in and give us a recommendation on equipment. You know, the good thing is, all your treadmills, all your ellipticals, all your bicycles are gonna be brand-new, they're gonna be the same brand. They'll all be equal and they're real nice machines. So it's all professional stuff. New carpet behind the stage, we're halfway there. You can kinda look at the mess on the way out. Again, you know, there's a lot of these filler projects. So if it's raining and the guys can't do something outside, then we do something that's inside. Or if it's 115 degrees outside, we try to get them in the air conditioning so we don't lose them. Lobby carpet. This is one that we're holding off until we get the pool and the pool deck area done. Only because there's gonna be dirt tracked in there. But I'm truthfully embarrassed at the condition of the lobby carpet in there. And we will address that. So you know, please don't, don't think it's being ignored. We'll fix it. Alright, pool and spa replaster. Let's look at a few of the pictures. So when we started, this was kind of the... They came in on a Monday and they installed pumps. And the idea of the pumps was to just get rid of the water. It never occurred to me that there's not just a drain. Like you pull a plug on the bathtub and it goes away. Doesn't happen. and it goes away, doesn't happen. So, I thought perhaps there was a valve they switched someplace and it just pumped the water out. No, that doesn't happen either. So they brought pumps in and they hosed them out to drains that were out by the pool and they started running it down. Well, the first day, at the end of the first day, I went and looked at it and it was down about six inches and I thought, holy cow. But overnight, it caught up and this was day two, so you can see that the water is kind of, maybe three quarters of the way down. And they actually, that quickly, while there was still water in the pool, they went in and started jackhammering the old surface off, so. This was day three and now, there's only a trickle of water left and they've already started taking out the drains in the bottom and the cleaning jets and things like that, that's all part of what they have to do. This was probably day five, actually, and you can see that they're in there with handheld jackhammers, literally pulverizing all of this surface. Now, there were two coats of plaster on this, so they had to get through both of those. The idea is to get back to the concrete so that we start fresh and they do some kind of a, an adhesive thing that goes on the concrete to help the plaster stick and it's a pretty, pretty good coating. They come with a ten-year warranty, so, you know, they're not messing around and they wanna make sure it's done right. Here, that was this week, you can see that they've made a lot of progress. At this point, they're just starting on the walls, so they hadn't really done too much on the walls. And this was yesterday, a good portion of the walls are done, they're now working on the stairs and this is when they started digging through the bottom of the pool in order to replace the drains and flow valves and things like that. Now, understand that everything you see there has to be rolled out of there with a wheelbarrow, as if they haven't worked hard enough, it's been a hundred degrees, down inside the pool, there's no breeze, no breeze whatsoever and the heat reflects right off of all of that stuff alone. It's got to be a hundred and forty degrees in there and they've been working and working and working to get this done, but now, they have to wheelbarrow it all out and haul it away before they can move to the next step. I expect that that process will begin today or tomorrow, they'll start hauling it out. They're still chipping away out there, it's a pretty interesting process to watch. You'll notice, kind of in the middle of the screen there, there's a, a step. On the sides of the pool, we had steps that just went straight up the side, those get replaced. When they redo the, the actual stairs, those are gonna be done in non-skid tile, it's more durable and it's actually a code requirement that those are supposed to be done in tile. They're not supposed to be done in, in plaster and overall, the whole look and feel of the pool is gonna change and I think be much, much better. Bathrooms, so.
Question.
Yes.
About how much does that cost to have the pool done?
Uh, just under fifty thousand dollars.
Sounds like a, a deal.
It's a, it's a lot of work, you know, I don't think there's a lot of material costs, it's labor, as you can see, it's just weeks and weeks of labor. They have absolutely assured me that they will be done by September first, so, but, you know, things, things could get bumped into along the way. So, onto the bathrooms. This was kinda like day one when we started, I put that up there because I wanted you to remember what they look like, you know, they were straight out of the fifties, I think, you know, I think we borrowed them from some other resort and just moved them here. They looked older than, than our resort did. We had to take off all the tile, there was, I mean, everything, we had to gut this. So, this is what we took it down to. Those walls between the showers, it's all cinder block, the whole building, the walls and all are, are cinder block, so we took all the tile off, top to bottom, the floors, everything. And then, because chipping that tile away creates some divots in the, in the cinder block, we had to skim coat everything with a concrete mix so that we had a nice, smooth base to go forward. This is where we're just starting to do that skim coat, so you can kinda see what we were dealing with. By the way, we put in new valves, no more push buttons, if you've ever used our showers, they were campground showers, you know, that's what you find in a state park, is they have a push button that runs for three minutes or something and then it turns itself off. They're hard to adjust, you get all soaked up, you got soap in your eyes and the water goes off and you're trying to find that push button again. We went with standard, commercial grade valves, now you turn it on, you adjust it and it stays on and, you know, we're just trusting that you'll turn it off when you leave. So, no more push buttons. This was when we started putting the tile back in, this is tile before grout, gives you kind of an idea of what it looks like. This is the finished product. So now, we replaced the fans in the ceilings, we have twice as much ventilation as we had before. We replaced all the lights, every light in there is now LED, very high efficiency, much better lighting, we put up new shower curtains, everything in there is brand new. We have a handicap facilitated, now, I'm not gonna tell you ADA compliant, but I will tell you, it's handicap facilitated. We ramped the floor, we put extra handrails in at a lower level, we put in a handheld shower so that you can use it. By ADA standards, you're supposed to be able to go in with a full-size wheelchair and turn around, you can't do that. But it is much easier for anybody that has, you know, any mobility issues or might be walking with a walker, truthfully, I mean, you can get a wheelchair in there, but you can't turn it around, you would have to back out. We tiled the entire bathrooms, so if you remember in the past, only the showers were tiled, everything else was painted and for two years, we've repainted them and they still looked horrible. I, I was really embarrassed and I will tell you that the few negative comments that we got were always about the bathrooms. When my vice president, we have a new vice president, by the way, and he came out to tour the property for the first time and we were standing in the bathrooms and I said, this is one of my big projects. Whenever I get a negative comment, it's typically about the bathrooms. And he looked at me and he kinda looked around and he said, you already have better bathrooms than eighty-five percent of the properties across the US. And I said, yes, but they're not at Victoria Palms standards and he approved the budget request that I made to do this. So, it was very unusual, but, you know, I think we're, we're converting him, so. Anyway, so we tiled the entire room up to, I think, the five-foot level, all the way around, so behind the, the commodes, we put in new urinals. Those of you who are female here don't have any idea, but the guys know that when you went into our bathrooms, they were so old that they had traps made out of plastic pipe underneath them and a bucket sitting under that trap to catch the leaks and it was completely gross. And now, we have the, the newest, modern, they don't have, it's all self-contained, there's no possible way it can leak and, you know, it's all the right stuff, so those are in there as well. As you can see, even in the stalls, we have tile and we replaced every single toilet with a comfort height toilet. No more little low things, these are all brand new. This was all feedback from, you know, when I, I'm, I'm sorry, we'll, we'll put a stepstool in there. I, I guess comfort height is not comfort for everybody, so, but yes, they're, they're all brand new, they all work now and, you know, I, I don't wanna be gross or, or, you know, anything else, but there were so many things that were wrong with our bathrooms that you couldn't even see. You know, most of the toilets had rotted out, the bolts that hold them in place and you could rock them, you know, it might have been good at times, but, you know, it's not the way they're supposed to work. So everything, you know, right down into the ground has been replaced, new flanges, new bolts, everything. So, they're real now. All right, laundry. We're doing an update to laundry and this is partially based on feedback and partially based on experience. So, one of the things that we get, have, or have issues with at the laundry is the coin stuff. You lose money when you put your coins in, our coin changer gets jammed, it's just a real problem and it always happens like on a weekend when we don't have somebody that can fix it. A great example is this last weekend, the coin changer at the small laundry went belly up. I don't even know what was wrong, something jammed in it or something? A dollar bill jammed in it. And so then, you know, people are all frustrated because they can't, they can't do their laundry. So, what we're doing is installing some new computerized equipment. The first thing that we're installing, actually, we already have, there's an app for your smartphone called CSC Service Works and it's available for Android or iOS and if you have a problem with a machine, you click this app, it brings up a screen, you scan, you scan the barcode that's on every machine and there's a little pull-down menu to say what's wrong with it. You turn that in and they guarantee same-day turnaround. And so, I get copied every time you do that, so I know what's going on in the machine, you don't have to call us. You don't have a smartphone, you can still call us, that's fine, we'll make the, the call for you. But now, you can do it real time and, and take care of it. So that's already in place. We're also, this is kinda how it works, so you scan the machine ID, you enter the service issue and you can request a completion notification and they will text you when it's been fixed, just so that you know that they did it and how quickly they did it. And then, you just press submit, I mean, it's literally no more than three clicks and you've reported a, a machine problem. We're also moving into a new laundry card system and this goes back to the coin thing that I was talking about. So instead of coins, we're doing away with coins, we're taking the coin changers off the machines. There'll be no place for coins. There'll be a machine that looks like this where you purchase a card, you can buy them as cheap as a dollar, whatever increment you want, you can use cash, American cash, or you can use a credit card to buy them. Once you get your card, it'll dispense your card at whatever value, you can check the balance on your card just by sticking it in the machine, you can add money to your card and the card works in all the machines. It also does tracking, so you put five dollars on your machine, there's a code number that goes on that. They're able to track that, so if you say, you know, I put five dollars on this machine or on this card and it disappeared, they can actually look at those codes and say, in fact, that was inserted into machine number twelve and was spent on that machine. It's not an effort to police you, but it's a way to validate if there's a real issue going on. So, you know, it won't be, you know, I think this is what happened or, there's actual tracking that can take place now. We'll be putting one of these machines in each of the two laundry rooms so that they're available twenty-four hours a day, they're all secure and, and things like that and we think it will greatly simplify. Second benefit from that, and we've had this on numerous occasions, people come in that have been in other parks served by CoinMac is the company that we use and they have cards, they might have had something left over or, or something like that and they wanna use them here, well, up until we get this machine installed, they couldn't. But now, they will, so if you're a traveler, you may be able to use these cards someplace else as well. So, I think this will simplify things, it's gonna take a big load off of our administrative staff for trying to manage those coin machines that are older than air and get us back into the current age. Recycling reminders, only the bins behind the restaurant are open for use, the ones down by the cactus club are locked. Please don't put any materials down there on the ground because we literally have to go down with the truck and pick them up and take them up to the other end because even we can't unlock those bins. In the off-season, we only pay for two bins to be picked up and so, we thought the, the most logical way to do it was to try to get everything together in one place, so we left the ones up by the restaurant unlocked and they're the only ones you can use. We moved the glass recycling truck up there and by the way, the glass recycling has been phenomenal. In fact, it's been so good that we're almost scared because we're having a hard time keeping up with it. We may have to deliver glass over to the recycling plant a couple times a week in season. I don't know if anybody's ever mentioned this to you guys, but you drink a lot. Man, so, not that I ever put bottles in there, I just want you to know that. But, no, it's working incredibly well, we're saving a lot of weight off of our trash, it's literally paying for itself, it's, it's a massively effective project and I encourage you to, to continue to use it. Bring your bottles up there and it helps us all the way around. White styrofoam and large cardboard are still up there, but remember, it's white styrofoam, there are such things as black in colors and things like that, but they won't take those, so, you know, we have to siphon those out. Also, if you're taking up like coffee cups, you have a party at your house or something and you have a bunch of little styrofoam cups, please put them in a bag, because what happens is, the wind can get them and spread them around and it's kinda difficult. Plus, we then have to bag them because we can't transport them as just loose cups, so. Small stuff put in a bag, big stuff, don't worry, just drop it into the bin. Activities updates, am I doing okay? Wow, I'm almost, almost there. Activities updates, upcoming summer events, September fourth, Labor Day barbecue in the ballroom from one to three, correct?
I have not finalized that, no.
She has not finalized that, we'll just hold her to it, okay? September fourteenth, Hawaiian luau, poolside from six to eight, five dollars a person, yes?
Yes.
That one's yes, okay. And October twelfth, potato bar karaoke event in the ballroom?
Yes.
Five dollars a person and you guys have just killed the baked potatoes, oh my goodness, it's been an incredible success, so that's why we're doing another one. We wanna continue to have events for you during the summer, we want you to have fun too. You guys put up with a lot, you know, the streets being torn up, the trees being trimmed and we wanna make sure that you're getting something out of being here for the summer, so. I budgeted, assuming it gets approved, for even more events next, next season, next summer. So, you know, we wanna keep doing things for you. Theme parties, I just wanna remind everybody, I'm gonna keep doing this just so that everybody's on top of it. October thirty-first, we have the Halloween Boo Fest, so be thinking about your costume, you know, and those of you at home, bring your costumes. January thirtieth, Mexican Fiesta, this is a chance to dress up as your favorite Mexican, whoever that might be. And, no, we're hoping that people really get into this and, you know, we have a good time, remember, all those words are being recorded right there. February sixteenth, Seventies Party, now here's a chance to go back into your bell bottoms and your disco attire. Pelican West Band will be here to, you know, take us through that party, but, you know, be thinking about it. You know, with me, what I do is, is I head over to the thrift store and pretty fortunate with finding things that kinda fit the theme and it's a lot of fun, you know, don't, don't hesitate because you think, you know, I don't wanna look goofy. Looking goofy is fun. You know, anytime that you can, you can not be yourself, it's a fun time, at least for me. And February twenty-seventh, Mardi Gras party with Music Town. This has been growing year after year and I think this one's gonna be huge. There'll be lots of stuff going on, there'll be a parade and a king and queen and all that stuff like we did last year, but, how many did we have last year, it was a hundred and fifty or?
Yeah, maybe a little more.
Maybe more than that, so, and I think this year, it's, it's gonna boom, so, you know, be ready. There's other things, these- There's other things. These are just the theme parties that we're having. And so, one of the things I was uh, accused of last year, and it was true, was I didn't adequately promote the theme party so that people knew what they needed in advance. And uh, so I'm, I'm not gonna let that happen again. So bring your stuff. And have you seen this frog? Gracie is missing. Now we assume that Gracie is out traveling, but there is the possibility that you know, Gracie hooked up with a little Kermit and you know, they're shackled someplace. I don't know. But um, um, Gracie is missing and, and we don't know where she is. Where did this picture come from? One of her travels?
Yeah, that was one of her trips. She was taken in there.
So it looks like a hotel room and you know, she's, I don't know who's in the room with her, but um... So uh, if you see Gracie or know where Gracie is, um, just let us know. We're worried about her, okay? And, I have ten minutes left for questions. Yes?
Uh, two. Uh, canopies in the dog runs?
Yes. Canopies in the dog runs is the question. So uh, we have all the materials for them, but we need a carpenter to do them. Uh, I, those of you that have been around for a while, probably know Mick Seats. Um, he's one of our seasonal work campers. He'll be back in November. And that's one of the top projects. So we've got uh, we're actually going to build our own. They're going to be like um, they kinda look like uh, Bus Depot things. Uh, with a nice bench built out of four-by-fours, a nice roof over them. Uh, I think they'll be very, very nice and they'll be durable. You know, we tried that uh, folding canopy thing and oh my goodness, they're just, you know, that's horrible. By the way, I didn't mention it, but there's been some suggestions that have come my way through various mediums. One of them was a uh, fountain for the dog park. A drinking fountain for the dogs. I have one, they're sitting in my office right now. I have one for each of the dog parks. And these are really cool. They actually uh, attach to water. They plug in. They filter the water, so the water kinda sprays out of the top of them to keep it circulated. It runs through a charcoal filter and as it evaporates or gets um, um, consumed, uh, it keeps itself refilled, so they're always there. The only thing we'll have to do is go in probably on a monthly basis and change the filters, but that was a suggestion that we got. So um, you know, there are things like that that, that constantly go on. If you think of something like that, please tell me, because you know, if it's worthwhile, I will do everything I can to try to make it happen, so. That's coming in. And question number two? Okay, so the question was about the temperature in the spas. Now this is one of those things that's a um, a constant issue for us. Um, we've actually had requests to go the other way. So here's what we're gonna try to do. We're, we have separate heaters on those spas. We're gonna try to set one higher and one lower. And we'll uh, announce, put a sign on them or something so that you know which one is which. And you can participate in the one that most suits your liking. But it's the only way, it's fortunate that we have two. And it's the only way that can, we can truly address everybody's needs, because y- you obviously like them hotter and we have some people that, you know, think they're too hot already, so. Uh, that's how we're gonna address it. Other questions? Yes?
When you are shampooing the carpet in the lobby, can you do the two card rooms? They are nasty, nasty, nasty.
So the comment was about the card rooms and when we shampoo the carpet? Yes, we will do the card rooms. We'll do the billiard room and the library.
And the poker room.
And the poker room.
And the poker room, yeah. Well, that's a card room, right? Kinda, sort of?
It's comfortable.
Yeah, but we'll do that, that whole area. And in fact, um, if you take a look on the way out, um, today, we have housekeeping in the bathrooms over there. Um, redoing the grout on the floor because those were nasty as well. So uh, they're doing an incredible job. They have wire brushes and they're on hands and knees scrubbing the grout. Um, you know, we have this policy or this, this um, idea with our housekeeping and, and we just call it deep clean. And the idea is if you're gonna spend time in a, a room or a facility or a building, doing the work, do it well. And even if you can't do all of it, do it perfectly for the part that you do and next week, do another part and do it perfectly so that we get better. I don't wanna be status quo. So we want to be better and that's what we're working on. So that's why you're seeing some of these uh, new type projects. Yes?
Here, those uh, emergency things for the phone, for people um, that haven't got the paperwork. We do have them at the office if they wanna learn how to do it.
So uh, that comment was um, if you're not signed up for that emergency notification, and by the way, we use that like um, as soon as I know about a water outage and they usually give me about five minutes' notice, I have an application on my phone and I literally send out that notice to everybody saying that the water's gonna be out. I wish I could give you more notice, but um, I've had comments like from Canada. Because you know, what you may not realize, it doesn't matter where you are, it's where your phone is. And so we have uh, owners, residents that are at home in Canada now and they get those notifications. And they think it's so cool to know what's going on here at the park. Now it could be other things. If we had some kind of a disaster or a, uh, you know, a major, major outage or uh, you know, something like that, it can be used for that as well. And don't forget that it automatically looks at the National Weather Service and it will give you uh, severe storm warnings and tornado warnings. Fortunately, we haven't had anything, but uh, that's good. I wish we could have some rain without severe weather, but in the event that we end up with severe weather, it will notify you. So I think it's an incredible uh, uh, tool to have. Oh, and, and what Janine was saying is we have the registration forms up in the office. So if you haven't subscribed, come by the office. We'll give you a form and shows you exactly what you need to do. And if you can't make that work, we'll do it for you. We would like to see everybody um, on top of this. Yes?
Um, the tree trimmers, they did a good job picking up all the fronds, but they're harpy everywhere. And I don't think all those uh, people that do the landscaping can mow all their though. Is all that gonna be picked up?
So the question was, tree trimmers are doing a good job. Um, those of you that are remote, um, tree trimmers have been here three weeks, I guess. And uh, and you know, it's a massive job. They pick up their fronds and they pick up the big chunks of stuff, but there's little pieces of stuff everywhere. And part of it is because we haven't had any rain, there's no grass and so everything is brown and it really shows up. Most of the little stuff, they actually will mow and it mulches it back into the ground. The big stuff, we pick up. So um, one way or the other, it will go away, but um, you know, we're not growing any grass right now and it's just difficult. One of the agreements that we have with the uh, landscape crew is we've actually asked them not to mow areas that are too dry and too dead. All it does is blow dust and um, it, it actually hurts the grass. It's better to leave it. So that's being done on purpose, but as soon as we get some rain, that'll come back to life and uh, we'll be mowing everything up, so. Yes?
I have a compliment for a young man that uh, uh, he cleans up around here and everything else. He's a, a very young man and I want you to know, you never see him till, uh, he works his little tail off. That he might be worth something, but he is excellent.
So that comment was about uh, one of our young housekeepers. Um, who has been working very diligently. Uh, we really appreciate that. We work hard with them to, to help them get through these processes, make sure that they have the right things to be able to do and um, um, keep them busy. But he's just an incredible guy. What you don't know is that he also works for a catering company. He uh, when the restaurant's open, he does some shifts at the restaurant. He does a lot of stuff. Um, he's uh, Brazilian, right?
Right.
And uh, he has a little bit of a language barrier, um, with everybody by the way. He speaks Portuguese. So even he and Hispanics have a little bit of a, uh, but he's getting better all the time. He's so dedicated and um, uh, you know, I was telling them actually, I had a meeting with them earlier this week and I was telling them, the day we hired him, uh, we were trying to get our scheduling for housekeeping in place. And we told him, "Go ahead and go over and do the bathrooms here in the uh, uh, ballroom." And we went over like uh, the end of the first day or something and he was still in there. He was like, "These are horrible. They're awful." And he was scrubbing walls and he was like going under things and you know, it was incredible and, and I reminded him of that. I said, "You know, that was what made you our favorite son when you got hired out here. Don't ever forget that because that's the kind of work ethic that makes a difference." Took him two days to clean those bathrooms in there. Yes. Uh, Mathias is his real name. We call him Matt. So a great guy. Yes, man?
Do we have an emergency phone or some way to notify people at the large pool? We used to have a telephone there, but it's no longer there. We don't have a cellphone with this and if something happens, there's no way to contact even the guard.
There actually is a phone. It's right on this pole, right outside here. There's an emergency phone in that box. So there is still one there. You just have to look over, make, it's a gray box and it says "Emergency Phone" on the outside. And these phones have changed. You know, we used to have this specialized system that we used. What we've done now is actually installed phone lines to each of these. It's a regular phone. Now it's not there for making phone calls because we have to pay for all long-distance on those lines, but they're there for emergency. So you can dial nine-one-one and, and spot on and it's an identifiable location. Um, there was a lot of um, you know, we went, my first year here, we basically didn't have emergency phones. Because we had done a transition on uh, you know, shutting down the old phone switch and we hadn't figured out how to get these up. Well, they're all up and working now, so. So you do have one out there. Other questions? You guys are too easy. You'll get home and you'll say, "Ah, I should've asked him."
Who'll call you?
Who'll call you?
Who'll call me, okay. Well guys, thank you so much. We did it in one hour and two minutes.